...twenty years, and he's got a website with all of his books.
I see that the only thing that's up to be amended.
Common counsel, everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Mr. Campbell is not with us today, Mr. Samuel.
Let us pray. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here tonight. We pray that you'd be with us as we're conducting city business. We pray that you would be with our police as they are patrolling and keeping us safe. We pray that you'd be with our fire, keep them safe as well. Pray for the administration and all our department heads and help them to make good decisions and lead us well. We pray for the children in this community, that you'd bless them and continue to keep our community safe. It's in Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselperson White. Counselperson Zostovny.
Here.
Counselperson Yon.
Here.
Counselperson Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Gill.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Counselperson Rodriguez.
Here.
Let the record be flat, all nine council members are present.
Okay. The three sets of minutes to approve, first from the workshop of June the 20th. I just wanted to add or comment, Jorge Lanz's name was misspelled, but that's not a huge deal, should be L-A-N-Z. Motion to approve with changes?
Second.
It's a motion in the second, approve with that change, anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Regular proceedings from June the 20th.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve, anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. And workshop minutes from last Monday, the 27th.
Most to approve.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda. I have one addition. Ms. Dawn Clem, who is the executive director of the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana, would like to just introduce herself, I think, under new business, maybe number two. I think they were going to try to get on our last agenda and couldn't make it, and she just wanted to kind of give a brief introduction, as she's new in her position, so I'd like to add that to number two under new business.
Motion to approve with addition.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve with the one addition. Anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Claims to be approved, claims in the amount of $1,983,986.13.
Yes, please.
I went through the claims, and we just had some minor adjustments, but they're all in order. And I believe we have, how many hand carries?
We have one tonight.
Stuff for the $14,109.40. Now, if my addition is right, that will bring our total to $1,998,95.53. $95.53.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
What this hand carry claim is, this is one that we received, it was dated May 27th to HR, I didn't receive it till last Thursday, and I had to get a vendor number. It was for Tokyo Marine, which was, this is a claim from 2012, that actually the case was finally settled. This was the insurance company we had prior to Travelers, so I had to get a vendor number, W9, and I spoke with Les about it, so that's. On that note, Heather, would you please send out email to all department heads, remind them to get their invoices in a timely manner, because also those two Tahoes, which is a good chunk of change, I don't know why they're holding on to their claims, for one reason or the other, but if you could just send a reminder to get that timely in. And then also add to that, I know we had some issue, people go on vacation, they usually do claims, to give that little friendly reminder that you need all those by the Friday before.
How much was the hand carried for? Thank you. And that was just the city's portion of that judgment that was settled on the case?
Yeah. What that actually is, is the attorney fees for the defendant, that our property casualty has to pay.
So I'll make the motion to approve the claims with the hand carry claim of $14,109.40, bringing the total to $1,998,95.53.
Thank you.
Is the motion in the second?
Second.
Motion in the second for Mr. Maples. Anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Report of the clerk?
None at this present time.
Thank you. Unfinished business, number one, 2016 OR 23.
In front of an ordinance that has been passed on first and second reading, and you also have in your packet a proposed amendment to that, a proposed amendment to that ordinance that has been adopted on first and second reading. You will see that the proposed amendment is basically an entirely, entire new ordinance. It looks drastically different from what it looked like when it was first introduced back in January. This is in reference to establishing an ordinance violations bureau, and I think we just need to take a moment to see how, why we are at, where we're at, and how we got here. If you recall, back in December 2014, the city council abolished the city court, and at that time, there was leaving no mechanism to prosecute ordinance violations or collect the fines. That would be effective after the city court was abolished, which would have been in January 2016. At that time, we looked at what other second-class cities did that did not have a city court. Discussions ensued with the clerk, and basically, we had three options before us as a city. One, we could do nothing, that didn't make the police department very happy or animal control. Second option would be to enter into an interlocal agreement with another entity such as Clarksville that has a town court. We believe that would have created a counting nightmare between the two entities. And the third option was to create and establish an ordinance violation bureau, which is what most cities do, they do not have a city court if they wish to prosecute ordinance violations. So that was the decision we decided to pursue as an administration, also along with the clerk. We thought it best to wait for the new council to take over, since we were middle of an election year. So in January of this past year, we introduced the ordinance that's in your packet, ordinance 2016 OR 23. It was tabled, it was tabled several times. Initially, it was tabled because we wanted to incorporate the fine schedule that we have on the books for the ordinance violations, and we have to go through every ordinance that we have on the books and determine what the fine is under that ordinance. They're not just in one book, they're in many ordinances that date back to the 1960s. So we were able to do that. Then we learned that we had some issues with the state board of accounts on how the ordinance was presented initially. We had some meetings with state board of accounts to address those issues, and then it was determined that we needed the cooperation and the assistance of Clark Circuit Court Number Three if we were going to collect moving violation fines under local ordinances, basically speeding tickets. We had discussions with Judge Weber, we being myself and the clerk, Vicki Conlon, and eventually we were able to reach an agreement in which the clerk's office would be established and declared by Judge Weber, a traffic bureau violations clerk, which would allow her to accept violations and fines for moving violations. If we did not do that, we could not pursue moving violations in her office. So, and along the way, while that happened, the Indiana Court of Appeals decided to step in and handed down a case called Merriman versus the City of Carmel, and the Indiana Court of Appeals struck down the entire traffic code that the city of Carmel had been using for the past 35 years, declaring that it was invalid. We wanted to wait to see whether or not the Supreme Court was going to uphold that decision. The Indiana Supreme Court did uphold that decision because it refused transfer, so that is the law in Indiana. But we did review our local traffic code, and we believe that we comply with the principles outlined in that case, and that home rule does allow us to have the traffic ordinance on the books that we do have. So, all that resulted in delays, and here we are with a ordinance in front of you that is the outcome of discussions and all these developments. I do want to clarify one thing, that since January of this year, traffic tickets have been issued by the Jeffersonville Police Department, it's just that they were written under state statute as infractions. So people were still stopped for speeding, they were not speeding through the streets for the past six months. It's just that if it's under, if it's written under an ordinance, more money comes back to the city as opposed to an infraction. So without an ordinance violation bureau, we have no mechanism to prosecute ordinances or collect the fines, whether it be a moving traffic violation, or a non-moving traffic violation, or an animal control violation. And all this came to head in the last two or three weeks, when we realized that there was a local security company, alarm company in the area, that were operating in violation of our local ordinance, requiring a permit to go door-to-door. The police department obviously could issue citations under that, but we had no ability to enforce or to prosecute the violation. So that's why we believe we need the ordinance violation bureau implemented. It would be a partnership between the clerk's office and the city attorney's office to prosecute those violations, collect the fines, and so forth. The sooner we can adopt this ordinance, the sooner the clerk's office can begin to implement whatever procedures that it needs to implement to begin to accept those fines and to comply with state board of accounts. Although I think it's not necessarily required, because all of our fines that are listed in this ordinance are in other ordinances that supposedly have been published, I believe it's probably best that we go ahead and publish this ordinance in its entirety, and once it's published, it will be effective 30 days after publication.
I, for one, am glad to see that you added a $75.00 fine for the discharge of legal fireworks, because I've gotten multiple complaints going past 11 o'clock on our fireworks.
That happens? I didn't.
Thank you for adding that.
I have a couple of comments. I sent this to the state board of accounts, and I got an email back this morning from the state board, that they found nothing wrong with this. And Mr. Merkley, it's getting the agreement signed with Judge Weber, so that will be attached with this ordinance, and we'll keep it on file, so the state board of accounts will also get a copy of it. It's one. The second thing is, it's, even though it's going to be published 30 days, there are some steps that need to be taken in the clerk's office in order to make sure that we have it done correctly. I don't want to set us up to fail, so I would like to meet with a couple of the council members at some point to go over what all we're going to need. I think most of the, we've already got the space. I contacted IT today about the computer, one of the computers that had been here, to bring it in there, telephone line, which we should already have. We'll need to come up with a petty cash and get with the finance department on fund numbers, and work with the city attorney on letters that we'll be sending out when somebody has 30 days, 60 days, and 90 days late on making a payment. And the R's that we're going to start off with, because, you know, my office has two people, including myself, and one of those people will be working in that capacity. So I don't know if she'll be in there Monday through Friday, you know, eventually, we're going to have to have probably a part-time position in there. Mr. Zostovny, I saw you kind of smile, was there a reason for that, when I said a part-time person?
No, it sounds like you're going to have to change your operation, so that's something you're going to have to evaluate.
Thank you.
And if I could point out, for one clarification, I think it's important that my office have that relationship with the clerk's office, and that we be on the same page, because we have determined that there are ordinances or ordinance violations that date back to the mid-1990s that are still on the books that have never been collected. And I think there's a few that even happened under the past few years while I've been city attorney, and to clarify, unless, I mean, unless the court, at that time, it was the city court, if the city court did not notify me or my office that someone had not paid their fines, and the ordinance violation had to go back on the docket for further prosecution, it didn't happen. So unless that happens, it's going to continue to fall through the cracks, and I mean, there are hundreds dating back to the mid-1990s, only about, only a handful for the past four years, so.
Ten at the most, at the most. And that's one other thing, too, is, you know, if you all recall, when I was clerk of the courts, I was only the clerk for closed files and to collect money. So as far as what had been on the dockets and stuff, I had no access to.
Because normally, how it would work is, is I would have a pre-trial conference with someone on sale on a speeding ticket, and they agreed to pay the fine, and well, they have so many days to pay the fine, well, if they don't pay it to the clerk, to the court, at that time, they didn't pay it to the court, and if the court didn't notify my office, well, then it just left, it was left in some file somewhere, so.
And Mr. Merkley, you say we're going to publish this in its entirety. Do we have to have a public hearing or anything on that?
No.
As long as it's published, we're okay?
No, we publish it. It would be published in its entirety, so the News and Tribune will make a little money off this one.
Couple of questions.
I was just going to ask, Vicki, as clerk, are you able to, if you chose, could you say, "We're not going to take any cash, we just want check, money order," or maybe not check, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of, you happen to deal with cash?
Yeah, we dealt with cash in the court, and what we did was cash and money orders. We did not take personal checks. And maybe eventually, down the line, do some online payments, but, you know, they dealt with cash before, and the person that'll be doing this has dealt with cash. And the thing is, is I cannot receive cash, because I sign off on the claims that go to the different entities. Patsy cannot take cash, because she is actually the accountant person on our end before it goes up to finance. So that leaves me one person that can actually take money.
One thing, too, when we're going to meet about your needs, and this is kind of off subject, but I don't want to forget this, is if you are going to be dealing in cash, I know there's going to be a window there, but I would like to see your employee have maybe a panic button or camera on there, just like, kind of like what they do in the sewer billing, because you will be dealing with cash. In this day and age, we'd rather be safe than sorry. So can you kind of figure that in, and your needs?
Yeah, yeah, I'll figure it in, but you've got to remember, we've got that window, where it's kind of hard for anybody to get back there. Because she's going to be, and I'm not saying, no, I don't disagree with you.
If they go in another way, Vicki, you know they're open. And in our offices, they go right through there, it's all open, so we got.
Well, that door can be locked.
You handled cash with the courts though before, correct?
Pardon me?
You handled cash with the courts.
Yeah, and it was an open area. I mean, yeah, we're going to, and I would like to have a camera, because, you know, even though this person wouldn't, still, somebody could still come in and do something. And I, you know, they.
Or they could say, "Wait a minute, I gave you $100." You're only giving change back, and then you say, "No, you did not," and we got, you know, it's just.
We're working on security measures, make sure that door's always locked.
Couple of questions. That was one of them, can't we just make it all online, or most of it online? Is that a possibility? I mean, right now, I mean, people buying everything online, Amazon, PayPal.
I don't think you can, I don't, I think you still have to give it opportunity to come in and then pay.
Could you set up a kiosk? Just.
This is going to have to be put into a computer like we did with the court, and I already have data designed, so all this is going to have to be in there. I mean, it's going to have to be given a receipt.
Yeah.
Right. And so, I mean, at some point in time, I want to look at maybe online credit card payments, but that's something we need to look down the line on. I've talked to other cities and towns that do this, they don't take online payments because of the, yeah.
Also, another question, operating taxi cab without a permit, Uber, I mean, what?
That's just a current ordinance we have on the books, maybe that's an ordinance we need to look at. I just, I just went through a lot of, what I would consider major ordinances that officers may be writing tickets on, so. I think that's a good point.
Who issues the taxi cab permits?
Finance.
I don't know.
Finance department.
Oh, really? I had no idea.
I didn't know, I didn't know until I saw that.
And the other thing eventually, too, with this, once we get this established and up and running, we can also look at taking code enforcement, and taking some of that load off of them on their codes, you know, to help them with that.
Any guesstimate of what the revenue would be? How many violations do we do in a given year?
A clerk would have a better handle on how many, I mean, I usually only, I only see them if they contest.
I mean, we didn't have any at all in 2015, because they were writing them on state statute. In 2014, I could go through the list, I know that on the list I have now, from the outstanding, there's around 900, and if you take an average amount of $50, it could be $45,000. I think you're going to, from 2012 to 2015, they really dropped off. So, but prior to that, there was a lot, so I think you're going to see some of the revenue come back.
Yeah, and not only have we not been writing those tickets since January of this year, they were not written last year either, because a decision was made, because the court was dwindling down, we didn't want to put, you know, tickets in that funnel, so they were, since, so last year, they started writing the infractions pursuant to state statute. I will say, the police have been, they've been very adamant that they want this, like to have this.
Yeah, because Sarah, she passed a new ordinance for her, and she has no way of.
You know, is there a way for us to do a mechanism for non-traffic ordinance violations? Yeah, but the bulk of your revenue is going to be coming from traffic violations, so if you're going to have it, you might as well include the one that you're going to get the most revenue from.
Is there a motion?
If you'll just remind you, your motion, this is amended.
Yeah, you need a motion to amend.
I was going to. We've got to make that motion first, and then make the next.
Yes.
So make a motion to amend the 2016 OR 23.
Oh, second.
A motion in the second to amend the ordinance to reflect what's here in the packet. Is there anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to pass in the third and final reading, 2016 OR 23.
How second is that one?
And I do have a question before we do this, I'm sure I know which way to go. Will it be something as simple, once this is up and going, and say we do want to remove the taxi cab violation? Will it be something as simple as us going, vote to remove one item from an ordinance?
I think, I think if you remove the ordinance, if you repeal the ordinance that established that, there's a separate ordinance that deals with each one of these.
Okay.
Yes. It's just state board of accounts is requiring for us to put them all under one ordinance for, I think, I'm assuming for their purposes, when they, when they do an audit, they have just one ordinance in front of them. Yeah.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes finally.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Heather Metcalf, there's a public hearing on 2016 OR 40, which is an ordinance of additional incorporation.
This is for $16,000 from the gaming fund for special projects for Mr. White.
For the UEZ.
It's a local match to UEZ.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open a public hearing for 2016 OR 40. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the ordinance? Mr. Eklund, if you would, just state your name and your address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Richard Eklund, 1608 Flintlock Drive. Before I begin, I'd ask for clarification, is this, I've been advised that this is not, this is a loan, not a disbursement? I mean, what is, who advised you of that? A councilperson.
As I understand it, we're appropriating $16,000 to go through UEZ.
Right.
For a project that the UEZ is.
I'm not aware if there's any loan documents tied to.
I don't know of anything, any kind of loan.
Okay, well, then, that's the clarification I was looking for. I guess I'm concerned, I want to preface my remarks by saying, I'm not opposed to a facility for the Black Masonic Lodge, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the city paying for it. I've attended some meetings, and some of the statements that I've heard, I'm a little confused by. I heard that the Masonic Lodge was forced to sell their property on Spring Street, but I attended a number of the, Board of Public Works, when that property was, had an issue with the building code, and they were, the lodge was given numerous opportunities to bring that up to meet the code of the city, and they were given numerous extensions, and to my knowledge, which is rather limited, they were never able to do that, or chose not to do that. So it seems to me to be kind of a misstatement to say that they were, I find that unusual that somebody would say that the city forced me to sell my property. And I don't know why city council should be, you know, if it is, it's being touted that it's going to be a facility that'll be open to the public, and it'll save a building downtown, to me, that seems like it's more of a development project, economic development. I don't know why city council would be called upon to provide funding, it seemed like it would be more fitting that it would be addressed to our economic development function here in the city, or the redevelopment board. So I just have some questions about it, I just asked the council to reconsider the matter before they take this step. I've come to city council meetings, and I haven't heard a presentation from the Black Masonic Lodge here to the council, so I hope everyone's had a chance to do their due diligence, but it just concerns me that I've heard some conflicting statements, and I think it's not appropriate that this particular body is being asked to fund this project. Thank you.
Who advised you, which councilman advised you of that?
Mr. Samuel said that he was under the impression that it was a loan to UEZ, and UEZ.
And I've asked for clarification on that, because that's, when I had a discussion, it was, that's how it was presented, that after, three years after the hotel got up and going downtown, more money would be falling into UEZ, and that the 16 could be given back to the council. So that was, that was my impression.
So it was, it was $16,000 that would come back to the gaming revenue?
To, not the council, but yes, to the fund it came out of.
Or if there was a project that was presented to the council, it was, could be funded by the UEZ, then we would do that, we would consider that project. I thought that was the discussion we had.
I don't know, I've always found if there's not documentation, it's not a loan.
It's not a loan.
Yeah.
There are no loan documents.
Is there any other who would like to speak for or against, before we close the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And leave it open for comments or a motion.
Well, Sam, I stated it last thing that I won't be supporting this because I think it's outside what the city council should be doing. That's just my opinion.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Immediately passed, pass ordinance 2016 OR 40 on the third and final reading.
Is there a motion, is there a second? No second? Then the motion would fail for lack of a second? Okay. We'll move on, 2016 OR 41. This is also an ordinance, I'm sorry, not also, but an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
This is for the planning and zoning department to purchase new software, or hardware, actually, new computers. Upgrade their computers.
Okay.
So they're just upgrading their computers and their software?
Yes, from 2000, I think he said, to, I don't, I don't know what you think about computers.
What did we pass this on already? Did we pass on just the first or did we pass on first and second already? What did we do? Don't know.
I imagine the first and second.
Can't remember, I'm sorry. I don't wanna make a wrong motion. It was passed on the first and second?
First and second, yeah.
And I'll make a motion to pass 2016 OR 41, the third and final.
I'll second that.
Motion of the second, 2016 OR 41. Anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. New business, Heather Medcap, 2016 OR, I assume, 42.
This is for additional appropriations, and I can go through each one here. The first one for 250,000 is for the airport that you all requested to take out of Edit. The next two for River Stage is moving the appropriation from the council's budget to the River Stage budget so that they can purchase equipment. That was already in the budget, it just needed to be moved so that they could use that money. The MVH performance increase is for the grid increases that were due to changing the salary ordinance to bring the minimum up from what Kim talked about before. And it wasn't addressed necessarily in the budget part of it because that does increase some pay. That's also the same issue with sanitation for the $9,400 is the grid increases. Slow me down if you need me to.
No, I'm gonna have a question when you're done.
Okay. The police and the fire are for the chiefs and assistant chiefs that I forgot to include on the last ordinance for performance increases. The one for vehicle maintenance is due to their grid increases there for their employees. And then the negative ones down below, which would be the law, engineer, finance, IT, safety, and HR, are all due to the allocation adjustments because originally, when I requested for the performance increases, it was the 100% that needed to be decreased by the amount that's being paid by other funds like wastewater.
Okay, so my question, the only one that seems strange to me, and I don't, is the council $30,000 going from council to River Stage?
That one is originally when the-
It seems strange that we wouldn't just put it in the River Stage budget.
Well, when you did the budget last year, you put 5,000 in the budget and you said, the balance needs to be under the council so that when they needed it, they could come to the council and we can move it to their budget so that they can use it.
We put all budget capital for the capital expenditure.
Yeah, what, what do they need it for?
They did say.
They fix, I think they purchased, like, I don't, I don't know exactly what all they do for that, but like, equipment for-
There was-
Screen, maybe, or sneakers, or-
Part of it was the screen, and we did give part of that money. A balance of it, I think, was supposed to come from a sponsorship that fell through for the video screen. And then also, there was a couple of items, one being a mower that they purchased and one being another piece of equipment to go along with the screen that was also-
Yeah, they originally had 5,000 and that's all been spent now. So this would just give them some budget to work with for the rest of the season.
I guess I just didn't remember that. I didn't remember it either when she pointed it out.
I, I understand that for advertising purposes, but unfortunately, that 250,000, I voted against. But I will, I won't vote against, given the, the performance pool. So I will vote for this, but it's kinda under, like, ooh, I wish it would've been separated out, but I understand why it wasn't.
I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. I just wanted the public to know that I didn't cave.
In the future, we can, we can separate anything out. It was, I didn't even think about, about that when I asked her to put the appropriation together. So we can-
That's okay.
We can make them separate if you'd like.
I don't think as long as the public, the public pretty much knows it. I was the only one that voted against it. And I, I really wanna move forward and give them their performance increase pool, so I'm, I'm okay.
This is just your first reading on this.
Is there a motion?
What's the ordinance number? Motion to pass ordinance 2016 OR 42 in first and second reading.
I'll second.
Is there a motion, a second? Anything further? All those in favor, pass them on the first reading. Second?
First, second.
Say aye. 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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number two, Ms. Clem.
Good afternoon or good evening. I'm used to talking during the day. My name is Dawn Clem, as President Owen said, and I am the new executive director for the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana. And we asked to be, I guess, on the docket just to stop by and introduce myself and say hi and put a name with a face and to let you know a little bit of an update of what we're doing and to thank you for your support. I've been on the position now, I guess, going on five weeks. And we've spent, I guess, the last month pretty much getting to know all the stakeholders in the Floyd County and Clark County region. I still have a lot more people to meet. My calendar is full, pretty much three meetings a day, going around, meeting people who are involved other in some type, way, shape, or form with the homeless population. Housing, public health, safety, different people. So I just wanted to stop by and say hi and see if you all have any questions about what we're doing so far and what we're planning on doing.
I had a quick question.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to see you're in place. One of the strong things that got my support and given the 75,000 to go towards in finding you was I liked the idea that it was gonna be kind of a, one, lack of a better term, one-stop shop, that you would have so many things there available to help. So kinda gives us an update where you are on that. And then the second thing is, I really like the idea that you all were gonna organize and work out, especially in weather, inclement weather, whether it be snow, heat, you know, bad weather, storms, or whatever. You were gonna work with different agencies or even churches if need be. So shelters were full that you could accommodate. So I was just gonna see where we are on those two things.
I'll, I'll address the second one first. That's pretty much what we call white flag. And again, just being on for a month, I've kind of even missed some of the time that's gone by that has been very difficult with the heat a couple of weeks ago. We are working to get organizations onboard. I've been meeting with the churches. I have a meeting scheduled in two weeks with Clark County, or Clarksville, to talk about maybe possibly using one of their fire stations that's not being used so that we have something. I think there are 15 beds there that they're interested in talking to us about. So we are working on that pretty diligently. As I said, when I am meeting with these stakeholders, they're kinda telling me what, what they have to offer and then I'm asking them how they would like the coalition to, you know, assist with their efforts. The, the one stop that you're talking about, I'm glad you brought that up because this is kind of a situation near and dear to my heart. We do have a space that we have under contract in New Albany right now. It is St. Paul's Episcopal Church. They've given us the second and third floors of their church to create a social service incubator. We are currently looking in negotiations with someone here in Jeffersonville so that we can have two points of entry right now in these two counties and be able to serve both of them in a way that people don't have to come to us, but we can go to them. And it will be a one-stop shop, a single point of entry. And we're hoping to be able to offer those spaces to Work One, who I understand has moved out of Cassie just recently. We'd like to give them free space to come in a couple of days a week and meet with whoever is coming in through our single point of entry. We're looking at the school system, a couple of different other models. They have one up in Madison, Jefferson County. And I've actually got an appointment to meet with them in two weeks to find out what that looks like and how they put that together and how we can recreate those here.
And would you mind, I don't know if you brought any extra cards, but your contact information? I'd really like to keep in touch with you and keep up on how you're progressing along.
Definitely, I'll get those for you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Ms. Clem, I'll be happy to email everybody your contact information and just copy you on that.
Right now, it is, it is operating out of my living room until we do get a space. You know, being a brand-new startup nonprofit, you know, we were looking to spend more on services and being able to provide that, that point of entry as opposed to like, spending a ton of money on office space. So we were trying to find the donated spaces. And actually, St. Paul's has given us that space for, entirely for free.
And I knew once you got in place, it was gonna give the opportunity for the task force to go after some more grants. Have you pursued that, have you had a chance to look into all that?
That's kind of my bailiwick. That's what I did over in Louisville and how I've even had any kind of interaction with Southern Indiana. I used to work for the Center for Women and Families and did all of their grant management for homelessness. And I'm a development officer, I'm a certified fundraising executive. So yes, we are hoping to look outside of these cities to actually support this. And I think if we can get good models going in, in more of our urban areas, that we'll be able to even start helping out in the urban areas and we'll be looking for funding for that as well. It is definitely not our intent to continue to remain, you know, underneath your umbrella, but hopefully, you know, you'll continue to support us until we can get to that point. I spoke my first week in front of New Albany City Council about three weeks ago and, you know, they're already asking me about funding. And I'm like, I can't get funding until I can actually do something to prove that it's needed. And so the single point of entries that we're gonna be doing are gonna be really good, hard, raw data that we can present to a lot of different foundations nationally to see if we can get some assistance.
How many, how many providers do you have that are coming together?
Well, here's the thing. We, right now, we have a coalition that currently consists of about 16 different providers in all of the surrounding counties as well as Floyd and, and Clark. What we're trying to do is get a lot of other people onboard and actually join the coalition. And in order to do that, we're not asking for dues. What we're asking for is just for them to take a resolution back to their group and actually join and so that we can start listing, these are the people who are involved in solving. Have you all read the Vision 2025, any of you? So we're gonna approach it from a very holistic standpoint and try and get entities from all of those areas into the coalition. And the building takes time. And like I said, I'm probably got about any, two to three meetings per day, every day, where I'm going out and meeting people, haven't even met with any, any elected officials yet, mainly meeting with stakeholders because I just kinda wanna find out where they are and what they see us doing in the long run. We are having a strategic planning session on Thursday. It will be just with the board and that will outline what our plan will be for six months and then the following six months so that we'll know what our priorities are and what we need to tackle.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay. City Council Attorney Report? Nope. Are there any department heads here? I don't see any. Do we have any additional public comment?
You have, you have-
Yeah, I just had the one. Okay, council comments, Mr. White?
No comment.
Mr. Zastani?
Yeah, just one. A few weeks ago, I went to Detroit. And when I got into Detroit, it was, it was pretty late in the evening. And one of the things I noticed is that all the lights were flashing, either yellow or black, or yellow or red. And so it was really neat because that way, there was not much traffic on the road anyway, so you could just, you know, yield and move along. And I talked to our engineer about maybe doing that in Jeffersonville. So just a thought, how that might work in Jeffersonville. I thought it would be great because I know there's been times that, late at night, midnight, whatever, late at night, 1:00, whatever, you're sitting there at a red light and there's nothing going on. You're like, why am I sitting here, there's no traffic? Might be a way to keep traffic moving along. After a certain time, turn the lights to blink and then automatically turn them back. So just a thought.
Ms. Yott?
No comments.
Mr. Maples? Ms. Gil?
Actually, I have a couple of things, sorry. As you all are aware, that both the FOP and the Local 558 have approached us to start their negotiations. I don't know if today, we got a email from Joe Hurt, which is the, the president of the Local 558. As we have done it in the past, the council, we've kinda, believe it was in, we had an executive session or something, but we, the council, we've all got together and kinda went over some key points. So it gives the direction, negotiation team to kinda move forward. I think in this first initial meeting, that they're gonna kinda give us, it kinda let us know coming out of the gate what's important to them and what, but I, it just was really beneficial that the negotiation team, that we come together with information from the full council moving forward, that we pretty much stood by that, you know, some of it was give and take, but we went in and, we know what was most important to council was very beneficial, as you know, I think Nathan, you were part of it. You know, we, we kept going back to those. We had a certain amount of points. So I don't know if, when we can schedule that. I know we have, it looks like a July 20th with FOP. But that is something I think that needs to happen. And I think I told Andy that, as you all are aware, we have in the budget 500,000 for sidewalks in Edit. And he has the sidewalk needs. He wants to know, do you want him to come before council or go ahead and appropriate that money? We, he got everything done on the list except two projects that he brought before us last year, and that was Sundancer and Hopkins. So that still has to be done this year. And if, I, I think it'd be good for him to come and kinda present to us the sidewalks or what, but if you all don't want that, if you just want him to appropriate, us to appropriate that money, he is asking to need that money because we're running out of weather, good weather, to get these projects underway. Matt, can I leave that to you to coordinate? I just told him I'd bring it before us.
Yep. I'll talk to him about it in the morning.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Did we want to schedule an executive session? Okay. Is that something we wanna take care of? And when do we want to do that? The, I know there's one meeting that's scheduled for the 20th with the committee. I'm sure you'd wanna meet probably before then.
I know it's convenient me to meet before council meeting. We can meet that before our next council meeting. I don't know how everybody else's schedule looks like, though.
If we're gonna do the 18th before the council meeting, maybe at 6:00?
Me back.
Is that okay with everybody?
Scott, are you available?
I'm gonna have to miss our next council meeting, so I won't be here for that. But I'm not on the negotiation committee either, so.
Well, if you could kinda let-
What was it?
Talk either with Scott or one of us that's on the negotiation team, maybe some concerns that might, you have his, coming from two backgrounds of yours and Scotty, I think it's beneficial to get your input.
Okay. So, Mr. Lewis, you can advertise that for 6:00 on the 18th? In the council conference room across the hall, yes. Okay. Mr. Hoffes?
Just one thing. I was on vacation the last two weeks and went to, I think, nine states. States that were different every time. In fact, had a lot of ideas, some silly, some profound, that I shared with the mayor's office upon my return. And the mayor was very receptive, took a great deal of time, invested, and then went so far as to investigate with these other places that we went. So I wanted to give kudos to him for that. And then the second thing was, I also had a- And then the second thing was, I also had a list of three things that my constituents had said that they thought were needed, something that's far from trees, that are getting ready to fall on the road, to potholes, and after sharing that with the mayor, the street department had those things knocked out within 48 hours, which I thought was just absolutely very responsive, and so I'd like to give a shout out to those people as well, they did a great job. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Samuel?
Just one comment. It's possible that I won't be here at the next, at the next meeting as well, only because my daughter is pregnant, and she is due within two weeks, so I will, I will let everyone know that that would be the reason I'm not here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I don't have any.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everybody that the sewer department has an executive session scheduled for Thursday at 2:30. I'm sorry. And they have encouraged council members to attend, and then they'll have their regular meeting at 3:00. Also, Mr. Lewis, we had met previously about some pending litigation, I just wanted to clarify that that's been cleared up. Okay, so, we haven't, that's not officially been cleared up, but we're moving in the right direction? Okay. I've been getting questions and comments about that, so. And then one last thing, I don't know if we need to act immediately, but I was told that one of our redevelopment, our redevelopment appointment, Kyle Williams, needs to come off, because he is planning a move outside the city, so he will have to come off of redevelopment. He just, I saw him in passing, and he mentioned that to me. So, we need to make another appointment to the Redevelopment Commission, and like I said, I don't know if he needs to be moved immediately, or if we have some time, I didn't really get that far.
We just had a meeting last week.
Till next month. Okay.
When do you guys, when do you guys meet?
Wednesdays at 6:00. It's one went the last Wednesday at 6:00.
I kind of have always had an interest in serving on redevelopment, it's not something that I've ever done before. If there's not anybody else that's interested, I would volunteer, but. I think it is useful to have council members represented. I think we've done that a lot in the past, and it's worked out more beneficial, because it's an opportunity to give a different perspective from the council.
I do like council reps, but at what point do we have too much government on all these boards? You know, maybe some private citizens on some of these boards would be good, not that.
No, I understand.
And I'm sure Cali's doing a wonderful job, but I just think it's probably responsible of us to put some citizens on these boards, and give some of that control back to them, and let them report to us with their findings.
Do we want to take a few weeks to think of potential nominations and discuss it at our next meeting?
It's fine with me. Okay. Just keep that in mind, and if any names pop up, maybe throw them around in the, in an email.
Do we need a letter of resignation from Kyle for the record?
I'll get one officially from him, just so that we can put it in the record. Yes, ma'am. And other than that, I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
We're adjourned. In 55 minutes.